7:02, so I'd like to call the meeting to order. I want to thank everyone for coming tonight. So I'm Andy Stack, currently Chair of the CA Board of Directors. Just remind everyone that our work session is being recorded and will be on the website. The agenda and background information can be found on the CA website, www.columbiaassociation.org/AboutUs/Leadership/Board of Directors, and encourage anyone who would like to follow along with those documents. And I will mention that the pools are not on the agenda for any type of vote tonight. I will remind everyone to please mute your mics when you are not speaking. Please be courteous to each other. And when you do speak, state your first name so everybody knows who is speaking, and speak clearly and slowly so that everyone can hear you. I will introduce each item on the agenda, just so we can kind of move along. And what I would like to do right now is call the role of the Board of Directors. Okay, Ginny?
She must be muted.
I know she's here.
I can see her.
Here, here.
Dick?
I'm here.
Lynn?
Here.
Nancy?
Here.
Jess?
Here.
I know Alan's here, I saw him.
I can see him, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, he's muted.
Renee?
Here.
I'm here.
Milton?
Here.
Andy, I'm here. All right, so at the moment, Shari is the one who isn't, and she may join us later. So approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So this is Renee, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second, Nancy.
Nancy. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Yes. Alan?
Can you still hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, we can.
Okay. I'm still totally flummoxed why we don't have regular resident speak-out. Why a link can't be given to the community to come. We, and I'm totally flummoxed as to why we hear no response. People, people at the confidential organizations in the government are using Zoom, et cetera, to, and I just don't, I don't get it. I don't understand why this continues to happen.
All right, thanks for your comments. Renee?
I second that.
Well, so it's less than, it's more than a comment, Andy.
Okay.
It's a violation, it's a violation of what we're supposed to be doing, and that's just not, not cool.
I did send an email.
Told us, told us simply that that was the decision.
Okay, so I would like to...
So, we've got the agenda. I haven't heard anything else. So I'm going to call the vote on the agenda. Is there any objection? And then I'll take a roll call vote otherwise. Okay, so I'll take a roll call vote. Janet? Approval of the agenda?
Yes.
You're muted, Ginny.
Yes.
Dick?
I'm a little confused here. Didn't we have a motion on the floor to discuss the situation with the resident speak-out?
No, we didn't make, there was no motion, Dick.
Well, didn't, I could've sworn Alan said it, and Renee seconded it.
Renee used the term "I second that," but she was more seconding the comment, not, there was no motion that I made.
Okay, well, if that's the case, I'll vote for, in favor of the...
Lynn?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Alan?
No.
Renee?
No.
Andy, yes. Okay, so it passes. So we will move on to the agenda. And the first item here we have next coming up is resident speak-out, and we actually do have some residents. So Drew, if you could get ahold of Joel Horowitz.
So can I ask a question? Were there any residents that were not allowed to speak tonight?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Everyone who signed up.
Okay, thank you, that's all I wanted to know.
All right.
Welcome to...
Sure. So that's not Joel yet. There we go. Welcome, Joel. Leave it to Andy.
Hi.
Thanks for calling in. Your time here.
Am I on? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Because I was trying to watch the meeting and it hadn't, wasn't working, so I didn't know if it had started.
You can go ahead, Joel.
All right. Well, I appreciate you calling. This is more complicated than I participated in a number of county meetings from Planning Board, County Council, zoning board, and other boards. My main reason for signing up was dealing with the general plan consultant, because I didn't realize you were paying them on top of what the county's doing. So how much is this when you're cutting things? And how many FTEs? And as I told the planning board, and told, will tell the county council with the county's plan, doing a market study now seems perilous. If you base it on 2019 data, it's out of date. If you do it on 2020 data, it's kind of inconclusive at this time. So I see that on your schedule is month two. Seems that should be, wait maybe until 2021 when we have an idea of what's happening. Also regarding your finances, as a member of the Harpist Choice Board, I guess we sent a letter regarding the pools. When you dealt with the bridge at Fairway Hills, the decision was made to replace it because the loss of revenue was more than the bridge would cost. Seems you might have the same problem with the pools if you start losing the younger people that you've already been losing for seeing memberships, and they don't come back after the pandemic's over. I realize it's expensive, but we proposed opening just a handful of pools as a compromise. Otherwise, people apparently looking online to join the Y or other places that may or may not be open. You might have seen the letter yesterday from the county executive regarding North Columbia Fire Station, and since I'm also a member of Harpist Choice Board, as I said, it's mentioned in there. That letter is less than honest. And after talking to Councilwoman Deb Young earlier today, it seems more dealing with internal politics and George Howard Building and the truth of the North Columbia Fire Station, which may, though, is now at East Cedar Lane Park. The athletic fields were put into contingency because the school system has yet to ever even discuss it, let alone approve it. And it's also unclear where the funding source is coming from because it's not really related to the fire station anymore. It's half a mile away. They also want to put parking lots there, which Deb Young and I agree, there's plenty of parking at the middle school. On the other hand, if they do put parking spaces, it should be close to the dog park and shared with CA rather than in the middle of the property that the county was last recommending. So I guess that needs to be added to your development tracker, which also, I guess Jessica, somebody will, Kristen will speak to you of the somewhat confusing state of this snowed-in Starbucks with people still objecting to the procedure. And I guess lastly, if you didn't see it, President Obama tweeted a article about the protests with the lakefront earlier this afternoon and mentioned Columbia, Maryland in his tweet.
Thank you, Joel. Joel, could you send us a copy of the letter to the board?
I guess I got it off of Scott E. Ward's blog.
Well, yeah, I mean, if you would, because I don't think we've actually seen it yet through our email chain. But thank you. Any questions for Joel?
Yes.
Alan?
Joel, back to the consultant. You asked how much we're paying, and then you said how many FTEs. Were you asking how many FTEs are the equivalent of what we're paying the consultant? Or were you asking a separate question? How many FTEs have we laid off? I wasn't clear what the connection was.
Of the consultants, because I guess you had half a dozen, plus I guess some of their unnamed staff is probably going to help them. So I was just curious, when you're laying off people and preparing salaries, how much of this consultant group is, and how much of their time is going to be spent on a full-time basis to CA?
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? No? Thank you, Joel. Appreciate your calling in.
All right, am I able to watch the rest of this?
I have no idea. Thanks, Joel.
All right, let me give the call to the next resident.
Actually, Andy, this is Ginny. While, while we're waiting, the question you, Joel, asked, I had somebody send me an email a couple of minutes ago saying they couldn't figure out how to get online to listen to this.
I think right at the moment it's being recorded.
Okay. We have David on the line?
Yes.
Welcome, David. This is Andy Stack. Thank you for calling in to the board.
Oh, hi, Andy. How are you?
Good.
Yeah. The speak-out we're concerned with, I think, you want to get right to that, right?
Yes.
I think Ginny had sent an email around to the board members on this, about this proposal on the Hobbit's Glen tennis.
Which I got from somebody today.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that's fine. I just went to check and see if everybody was on that, so they kind of read through this thing.
Well, it came in very late, David, so I'm not sure everyone has actually had a chance to see.
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine. It's fairly, it's fairly simple, actually. Since we're having trouble getting the Hobbit's Glen tennis court open, courts open, we figured we'd try to get, see what we could do on our own, possibly. I know there's a money crunch. That's what we came away with the last time we had, you guys had a meeting on this subject. And we found a way, it looks like, I did some research on this thing with the actual people, and I, and I got this by mistake, actually. I thought the, I was asking for a different, just another contractor to look at the thing. And it turns out, a very well-reputed guy at Suburban Club, the pro down there, gave one of my fellows his contact information. Lo and behold, it's the same fellow that does the Hobbit's Glen. And he did a tremendous job on that, the two courts that he redid. Last, I guess, yeah, must've been, yeah, the end of last year. The Courts Five and Six. And they, they put the new water in. It was a complete rebuild. At any rate, so we were kind of figuring, why can't the other part of the, why couldn't the other part of the club open? Courts One through Four. They need to be reconditioned every year. They're, they're the old courts, and they need to be reconditioned every year. So I guess, it looks like the timeline on this thing. Back in March, CA gave sport builders the, a deposit of $4,000, which that, you know, normally a contractor, it takes his, goes out and buys the materials and stuff like that out of a deposit, and then just, he collects, collects the money when he, when he finishes, or whatever's left. In this case, I mean, I'd have some, many conversations about this. And it looks like, based on some communication with him, that he's willing to not bill the remaining $4,000 due on the reconditioning contract for Courts One through Four. So we got an idea, and we have a very vibrant 55-plus tennis community, and who look forward to this, this thing every year. Because it's a lot easier on our joints and stuff like that. Because I'm, I'm in the same group myself. So, long story short, it looks like we solved the money problem for Hobbit's opening. And we could, I mean, that, that part we can take care of. So I want to know, possibly, any ideas on this stuff. I know, I've talked to a few people on the board, and the question of insurance came up, and I know you guys are self-insured, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, for any kind of liability or anything like that. So my, my, I'm not in the property and casualty business, I'm more in the life insurance business, but I know a lot of property and casualty guys. It was kind of strange to me that you would self-insure rather than buy the liability policies, which are like pennies on the dollar. But anyway, that's, that's the way it is. If, if necessary, the guys who want to play out there, we would propose, leave you guys harmless in case something happens, and, you know, put together a waiver system. You know? So we wouldn't, you'd be on, we'd be on record as we had no recourse. You know, in case something happened up there. And I think that's important, because I think that question has come up. And also, the, we offer, we can offer our services on the actual administration and things like that as well. I mean, if, if the CA tennis people wanted to do it, that would be fine also. But I was told that there are staffing issues. Now, just to give you a little background, staffing at Hobbit's Glen for the last, I don't know how many years, consisted of one person on the courts from eight to 12:00 in the morning, one person at night until, you know, like eight, eight, four to eight, four to eight. So I don't, I don't know that that would be a particular problem. But the guys that we have, we also have some experienced guys in the maintenance of the courts as well. So our, this thing is very simple. We can do the money part, and we can do the administration part. The question becomes, do, does CA, or the CA tennis people, or sports and fitness, or whoever it is, want to, want to open the courts? Because the, the actual, the builder who would do the refurbishing is still on the schedule, okay, for visiting next week to finish off those two courts, Five and Six, the rebuilt courts. And while he was here, he could do the One through Four and get them ready to play. So the whole thing would take two and a half, three days, the whole shooting match. And he, this, it seems to be like they're bending over backwards to try to get this done. And just to give you a background, Hobbit's is the smallest of his clients. I don't know if you're familiar with Sea Colony in Bethany Beach? Do you know anything about that?
Some people are saying they do.
Some are nodding.
Right.
Yeah, well, just to, just to let you know, that is probably the fourth or fifth largest tennis facility in the country. And they, people, a lot of our guys go down there and say those courts are magnificent. The Clay, the Clay first, this is the fellow, the one good thing that the tennis people did was to hire this fellow. This is, he's excellent, excellent reputation. Just locally, he does suburban club now, he does Country Club of Baltimore. Well, there's a high-dollar Country Club in Philly. So he's really got a great reputation, and he does great work. And he's, it looks to me like he's just willing to, to bend over that backwards for this, to get this done. And I would assume that we'd like to get a facility like this open, simply because the, the older clientele are the people that, for the large part, really spend the money at CA.
Okay.
And they're willing to, they're willing to go outside CA.
David?
To get this done.
Let me just ask if the board has any questions.
Yeah, sure. That's fine.
Any questions to the board members?
I have a question. David, does, have you approached CA management with the information you've just given us?
No, no.
Okay.
Nope.
My suggestion is you go there. I mean, the board has approved the budget, but if this ends up being an operational decision by the staff, they'd be the ones to, to at least coach us with a...
Yeah. In all honesty, what were the last words we heard from them? And this is when they, they shut everything down. They had asked for a refund to the builder for the $4,000 that they put up, then asked for it back. Well, of course, he already bought the materials and all that. So he offered to give them a refund, but he had to get rid of the, you know, rid of the supplies first, which I thought was very, so far he hasn't done it. So I'm not sure.
I get all that, and, and this is, this is a very, this is a fast-moving, changing situation, and who knows what the situation might be now. I would just suggest that, that, let me just put it this way. Having said what you said, the board tonight is not going to take any action. We don't vote during work sessions, and so we're not going to take act, so we're not going to be taking action. So if you want action, my suggestion is you make sure that management knows these facts, and so that they've got some time to think about this.
I think they've been communicating, but I don't know for sure. I didn't catch your name. You're not Andy, right?
No, I, this is Alan Klein. I'm the Hobbit, Harpist Choice.
Yeah, I, yeah, okay. Yeah, I mean, I can take it up with him, but what we do pushes us back even further because I don't, I will, I'll, I'll take that approach if you want.
Yeah.
I want people to be aware of it.
Good thing to make sure you approach the management, and we'll make sure we put it on our tracking log for a response.
Yeah. And Andy, quick question. Yeah, is your concern that if CA doesn't act on your offer quickly that the guy will find another buyer for...
Oh, that, yeah, because that's, it's, it's a wanted thing. Yeah. That's part of it. But I think he's going quite a long way in trying to settle the situation.
Okay, the second quick question is, how confident are you, just for information, that your, your members or your people will really be willing to put up the money for this?
I already...
About managing or administering? Because I honestly think that could be a real legal issue for CA, but I'm talking about putting up the money to actually fund it.
Oh, yeah, that's, just to give you an idea, there's probably, I'm thinking 150 guys, maybe. And plus, actually, probably 200, between USDA teams that I captain and my Monday-Friday group, which plays a lot of Longridge, kind of keeps them afloat in the winter. At any rate, yes, these guys will be willing. I will probably raise more than needed. And I probably could get commitments on that, the pledges on that, within 24 to 48 hours.
Renee?
So I just want to make sure I understand what you're proposing. So you're proposing that your group will pay the contractor in full?
They'll pay that $4,000, sure, absolutely.
Okay.
The deposit is not coming back.
Okay. Are you also proposing that you will staff Hobbit's Glen from the same, basically the same hours as last year?
No, that's, that, that would have to be worked out. I think I mentioned earlier that there was only ever one person out there.
Right.
The cost of having one, you know, it's usually a younger, a younger guy that's, you know, at the desk there.
Correct.
We will, we will take care of the actual maintenance. When our players are out there, they'll take care of the maintenance on it. In other words, they drag the courts, they do all that, all that work. And then it just, it's, it's a flow. It's, it's an easier process than one might think.
No, I've, I've been up there.
Yeah.
John's my neighbor.
What's that?
John Mayhaut's my neighbor. I've been dragged up there before.
Oh, is this Renee?
It is.
Hey, Renee, it's awesome. Okay. Yes, you, you know what it's like, and John really knows the name there, too. So at any rate, the...
Any other questions?
Yes, Andy, it's Dick.
Lynn has a question, and Dick has a question. Lynn was first, then Dick.
Okay. Dave, would only your group be able to play on the court? Or how would that work?
Yeah, see, I, you know, I hadn't got that for you. I don't think that, that, I know that that would be where the legal issue, I think somebody mentioned, may come up, if it was just limited to those guys. The only thing I would say is, they would ask for preferential times and stuff like that. That's about it. And we, look, they've got room for everybody up there, because there's going to be no USDA out there this year. One of the biggest cash, that's cash cows that the tennis, the tennis bunch had, they said already they're not playing any USDA on CA courts. So if there is, either, if there are leagues, they're going to have to play somewhere else. So that frees up all evening, right? Most of the weekend, not by having USDA. So there's going to be plenty of room for everybody.
Dick?
As CA members go.
Dick, you got a question?
Yes, actually, that last question pretty much covered my question, and that is, I just want to remind you that we don't want to get in a situation where we're running out our facilities to the people who can afford them. This is Columbia, and if we open every, anything, it has to be open to everybody, so.
Yeah, I, we...
As you're talking to, as you're talking to Dennis and, and Dan about this project and giving them the particulars, just keep in mind that you, you can't get exclusive use of the courts or any of our facilities.
No, I don't think we're asking for that at all. I would say this, that I doubt if anybody's come up and said, "Look, we'd love to have Hobbit's open up," and made any kind, any advances toward trying to take care of it financially. Okay? So that could be, I mean, these, these are things, we're just, we're just putting out there, like you said, it's, you guys said this is a working situation. We're working meeting tonight. And you, all these details can be, we can, we can get to work on that with whoever we're talking to at CA Tennis. I think, I think Dan was made aware of this as well. Dan Burns?
David, thank you. I don't think there are any other questions.
I'm going to have a meeting.
Oh, wait a minute, sorry. Nancy has a question for you, Dave.
No, no, I'm good.
No, she's good.
Oh, hi, Nancy.
Hi, Dave.
So, yeah, please contact, and as said, we'll, for the, please contact the staff. But thank you, David. Appreciate your calling in.
Yeah, sure. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, that completes our resident speak-out. Those are the two people who signed up. We're going on to our first agenda item, which is a proposed form to handle our new topic. We're going on to our first agenda item, which is a proposed form to handle our new topics for the board. Um, and I will ask Janet if she would like to say anything. I want to thank her for her work and for putting forth an idea. Janet, anything?
Uh, I'll just say that when we had our ad hoc committee last year, one of the things that came up was, um, you know, there was some concern around the quarterly B O C meetings and that kind of thing. And the main sticking point there was our ability to get items on the future agendas. And so, um, in thinking through this, I was trying to create something that would be quick. Uh, you know, meaning that if a board member has a proposed agenda item, that they just provide that brief information. Board can decide in a few minutes whether or not it's something that the board supports putting on an agenda. It's, it's not a deliberation of the topic. It's just literally the board deciding, do we all think this is going on in the, well, do, does the majority of the board support getting it on a future agenda, um, or not? Because otherwise what had been happening is we had our agenda log kind of thing. And sometimes people would put ideas on there and they would languish on there. Um, and so this is just a way that any board member can gauge, um, the support and or, you know, willingness to discuss of the rest of the board, um, move it forward in, you know, in a more efficient, uh, fashion. So at least, you know, if somebody has a proposed agenda item, they get feedback immediately on whether or not the rest of the board feels like it's something that, um, is a good investment of our time. And, um, you know, and then the other piece of the form is that it is, um, asking us to tie it back to our strategic objectives. So, um, you know, whatever someone decides to propose, uh, the idea is that it should be in line with what we as a board have decided are our strategic objectives or priorities, um, so that we can ensure that we're investing our time where it, um, makes the greatest impact for our community. Uh, and the format of this is simply this, you know, in, in agile, uh, teams, that's the format that we use to create what we call user stories. Um, and, you know, the idea being, thinking about who's using it, why they're using it and what they're using it for. Um, and so, you know, the idea is to just give us enough information on whether or not we can decide if we want to continue discussing it on different, uh, on a different night. Um, and then finally I'll just say, as I was writing that, I realized that there may be things that were time sensitive. So I just tried to anticipate what those could be. Um, those are all suggestions, of course, and I'm open to other feedback. But the idea being that if, for instance, somebody has an agenda item that comes up very quickly, um, if three, you know, if, if the super majority of the board decides that it's relevant for discussion tonight, for instance, you know, or whatever that night, um, or is time sensitive in any way, then, um, it can get moved up. Otherwise it would go into a, you know, for some set period of time. Um, so that if it, you know, if it's agreed upon, then we understand that it will be on an agenda at some point in the next however many months.
Thank you, Janet. Any questions for Janet?
Yes, I have one, Dick.
Okay, Dick?
Uh, that sounds like a great idea. I'm, I'm wondering how do we access this list if we want to put something on it? Does this go through Andy or is there an on air app or what is there?
No, so it's literally just you submit it for, you know, so for instance, if tonight you had an agenda item, um, you know, one of the things the ad hoc committee did implement was the ability to discuss new upcoming agenda items, um, for new business. So for instance, if during this meeting you come up with an agenda item that you'd like to discuss, then when new business comes around tonight, we could discuss it. And then, yeah, the point is, is it just, it's, it's supposed to be quick so that we can decide and move on or decide and, you know, agree that it's something everyone wants to discuss.
Okay. So this is something we would bring up at a meeting and at that point have a quick vote to decide whether it goes on the agenda, either at that meeting or later.
Right. If you have it ahead of time, so like say on, you know, on Wednesday you think of this and Janet's going to be putting out the agenda for the next meeting on Friday. It's of course beneficial to include the information in the packet, one, so residents could see it. And two, so the board has time to evaluate it. But, you know, the, the whole point here is to not limit it to very specific venues, but to give us the flexibility to be able to implement, or, you know, to have the conversation as soon as we can.
Help me here. So if we have an item we want to put on, we would let Janet know about that. And then she could include that in the packet. But if it's something that comes up at the meeting itself, we still can verbally, uh, jump in and, and ask it.
That was, that was my proposal. Uh, I think like if Janet's going to include it in the packet, then we would have bullet points under new business, already pre-populated.
Okay, good.
People, you know, could take a look at things ahead of time. But yeah, I think, you know, it.
I, I like that. I have a, one question that's related to that for Andy. Um, I had in my calendar here that on Monday we were going to have a B O C meeting.
We had it.
We, okay, that, what I want to know is since all board members are invited to the B O C meeting.
Yes.
I never got notified that, what the, what the entry key was.
Oh, all right. We'll check on that.
That only go to B O C members?
I don't know. I will check to see.
I think in the future we want to make sure it goes to everybody.
Right. Yes. Yeah, definitely. Um, but thanks for bringing that up, Dick, because I wasn't aware of that.
I want to say something too.
Nancy?
Um, I really, I, I like what Janet's proposed here. And I think the whole idea is to make communication a whole lot easier, um, amongst the board at least. And I would also like to say that I appreciate the, the questions, the way the questions from the board members have been handled, that we received the questions and answers this, um, for this week's meeting. And I would like to see that again, moving forward. If board members have questions, if we could submit them to whomever and then get a response, like within a week would be really awesome, rather than waiting for long periods of time to get responses to our questions. I would love to see that.
Okay. Any more questions, uh, discussions on Janet's proposed form?
Yes.
Alan? Alan, you're muted.
Quick one.
Okay.
Well, I'm not muted now, am I?
No.
Um, just so I'm clear, this is just one form you're proposing. Cause it looks like page three of the packet and page four of the packet.
Yeah, no, no. The first, yeah, so it's literally the first page is all you would be completing. Um, the, oh, I take that back, the second page, because the first page just gives you a list of what's included there. But it's literally the, the half page form is all that's being requested in terms of information. The other, the, the page after that has two examples of how I envision it being filled out. Um, you know, so just providing, like the first one is for this exact form. And then all the rest of it is supporting documentation. So, um, as I said, like I, I initially just planned on doing the form, but then as I was doing it, I realized that we would have to decide on how we, you know, what kind of procedure we as a board wanted to put around it. So I made some recommendations and, you know, those of course are open for any feedback. And then finally I attached the, um, strategic objectives so that if someone was trying to link it to one of those, they could just go find it right there on the page.
Great. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing something because I can sometimes miss a detail and think I'm doing the same thing.
No, and then like the last page, we said there's nothing wrong with trying to create a form that made it easier for people to type information in. But otherwise, yeah.
Okay, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Hi, guys. Finally got in. Um, Janet, I would really like to thank you for putting this together. I think it makes that the best use of the, the agile kind of technique. I think it's going to allow us to, um, to move on and focus on the topics um, that people really want to talk about. And I think it was done, um, succinctly. And I think it's going to really help. So, um, I'm, I'm all in favor of doing this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jenny, anything you want to add? I think I saw you there.
No, no, I was agreeing with, uh, that I want to thank Janet for spending, this was a lot of her time that she spent on this. So thank you.
All right. Any more discussion?
Yeah, this is Alan. I just want to add one thing. I want to throw the motion around. Thanks to you, Janet. I just want to point out that if, this is going to take a special kind of chairing, Andy, because the idea is not to talk about the idea, but just to talk about whether we should talk about the idea.
Right.
And, uh, and so I would like us to be clear when we're overstepping the bounds and have it particularly as we're starting to implement this. Uh, be okay if one of us could rate, you know, just sort of call the, sort of like a point of order. Say, aren't, aren't we just supposed to be talking about whether we talk about this? And, and others not take offense at it. So we can calibrate that with ourselves.
Right. Very, very good point that it's for just discussion on whether you want to add it to the agenda, not discussion of the actual proposal.
Correct. Well, you all have, I would be fully in favor. I would be fully in favor of putting a time limit on that discussion. I mean, I just, on the form it says five minutes or less. Uh, it has the full intent and nothing should even take five minutes, quite honestly. But if there needs to be clarification on what the agenda item is, that to me is the only reason that there's any discussion at all.
Jenny? Yeah.
Jenny?
One of the benefits that I see to this is that if somebody has an idea, and frankly, I can't think of what right now, what example right now, but, uh, that would require a lot of staff time. And I, I, you know, one person asking the staff to do all of that and it winds up where, um, there isn't a majority of the board that really, really wants this done. So we've wasted staff time. So it's sort of, uh, and it gives the staff a clue as to whether this isn't going anyplace, you know? That's, that's a side benefit, I think.
Okay. Anything else? If not, um, this actually will come up for a vote. You know, because we have to vote to use it, um, at our next meeting. So just, uh, stay tuned. Thank you, Janet. Appreciate the work. All right. Next we're on the Howard County General Plan update. And, uh, Milton, I'll say, do you want to say anything first or?
Are we going to go ahead with Kristen? She's going to lead the discussion.
Okay. Welcome, Kristen.
Hello, everybody. Nice to see you. Um, as you all know, um, and I mentioned at our last hearing, we have selected the consultant team who's going to work, um, with the board to facilitate some conversations, um, about planning principles in Newtown and to help us, um, develop some big picture goals that we have for the future so that we can cooperate and advocate, um, with Howard County as they go through their general plan rewrite. Um, I did provide you all with a memo that you should have gotten in your packages. And on page one, um, crossing into page two of that memo, I included a brief bio of each of the team members. Um, I don't want to read their bios right now, um, but I just want to point out, um, as I'm sure you've noticed, that it has a really great cross section of planners throughout the country, including Boston and California, as well as those who are familiar with Howard County through other projects and through, um, local work. Um, page two of my memo shows a schedule of work. I know it's, um, a little bit fuzzy, but you can see that it anticipates a four month, um, timeframe from start to finish. The contract was just signed within the past few days. And so, um, we should be kicking off. I like to think it will be kicking off in about six weeks. Um, but I am in the process of starting some conversations with the consultant to sort out some of the nuances that we're facing in light of COVID. Um, the scope of work that starts on page two of my memo, um, shows, uh, four tasks, which are, um, which are how we're grouping, um, the, the process. Task one is discovery where, um, the consultant will learn about Columbia, but, um, we as C A will learn about planning. And, you know, the history of planned communities, um, what other places have done. And it's really a lot of, um, learning and insight into planning and how that applies to Columbia. Um, on each of these tasks, the original idea was that there would be one workshop per task. Um, I did note in the memo that that's up for reconsideration due to COVID. So what we might see instead of one, say, long four or four hour or half day or even longer workshop per task, might be three or four shorter virtual sessions. Um, we're, we're going to figure out how to best, um, bundle the information so that it makes sense. And we know that, um, the time period or the, the length of time that a virtual session would take, i- it's just impractical to suggest that that would be, um, you know, half a day or something. Nobody's going to have the ability or the, you know, desire to sit in front of their computer for that long. So I'm thinking we will probably have instead work, task one workshop one, we'll probably have task one workshop, one A, one B, one C, something like that. And each workshop, I can't imagine being longer than 90 to 120 minutes. There would be opportunities in these workshops for interaction. Um, I'm told that the consultant that we've hired has some great resources available for, um, engagement on the computer. So maybe submitting surveys or answering questions that pop up on the screen, things like that. Um, that should keep us all engaged. Um, moving along task two, um, the theme is big ideas. Um, that will help us come up with, now that we've learned about planning in other communities and the history of Columbia specifically, um, how will we apply that information to help us identify the preferred future? And what, what do we envision, um, our goals for Columbia going forward? And what would we like to advocate for? Um, task three is just titled synthesis into a vision. So the information that we've, um, brought together through tasks one and two, we'll refine that into components of goals and guiding principles. And those goals and guiding principles are what we as C A and Columbia would use to, um, inform Howard County, um, other residents and to guide our own comments as we advocate for C A in our interactions with Howard County. And then task four is a summary report and that's just a written document. Um, probably along with a PowerPoint that our consultants will provide us to keep in our hands and use, um, going forward. They're aware that we don't want this just to be a document that we put on the shelf and remember back in the day when we, you know, when we had these great consultants come and we did this, um, hopefully fun project. But it's intended to be a report that we engage with ongoing as we work, um, to move Columbia into the future. So those are the four tasks and, um, my summary. I, I, I know there's a lot more, um, details in the report that I sent you, but I don't think you want me to just read it back to you.
Okay. Uh, we have some questions. Uh, Renee?
Uh-oh, I can't.
Kristen, I, I want to thank you for the work you've done on this. You have it laid out well. It's concise. And you get to the point on each of the tasks that you expect to perform. My question, my question is, um, if I look at the scheduled work to be completed, how does that parallel with the county is doing? Does that, does that make sense? So I know the county is right now starting their process. Are we going to be paralleling that process or are we going to be behind or in front of them? Do we lose them?
Uh-oh. She just, uh, she had a technical problem. She left the meeting.
Andy, can I get on the list, please?
So.
I'd like to as well.
Hello?
Yes.
Kristen?
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 Did you hear the question?
Kristen?
Kristen?
Hi, this is Jessica. If Kristen's trying to get back on, I can answer some of the questions I've been working.
Hi, this is Jessica. If Kristen's trying to get back on, I can answer some of the questions I've been working with.
Hi Jessica. Yes, that would be great. Could you answer the question about whether or not we're paralleling?
I could, I just suddenly started hearing you all again. I don't know what happened.
That's okay. So my question was, I wanted to compliment you on the work, the way you've even laid out the proposal. But my, my question is, if I look at the scheduled work, the four tasks over four months, are we going to be paralleling the county or are we going to be ahead of them, behind them?
Ideally, ideally, we'd like to be a step ahead of them. At, at the worst case scenario, since there's a lot of variables right now, we would be paralleling them. We do not want to fall behind them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next is Lynn, Janet, Jenny and Alan. Lynn?
Okay, I certainly remember hearing Anne Forsyth and certainly I think most of us have run into Ari Arvin. So it's good to have familiar people. Is there anything you would recommend that we do for like background reading? Is there anything you could put together that might be helpful before we start all this?
Sure. You know what, let, when I have my meetings with the consultant prior to bringing them to you, I will present that question to them and see if they have any recommendations. I think what we're really looking for though is just your experience as a resident and, you know, you, you drive down these streets and know what you like and don't like. And we don't want you to get too into the academics of it because we're not coming, we don't, we don't want you to give us academic answers. We want you to give the answers of a resident of Columbia. So I will ask them if there's anything that you need to prepare in advance. From my end, I do not have anything, but if that changes, I'll certainly reach out to all of you.
Kristen?
Yeah.
There are some books out there from my, from my time in Reston. There are some books out there on Newtown. On Newt, I think some of them are just called New Towns in America.
I can certainly send out a reading list that would be less than required reading, but perhaps if you had a particular interest, you might be interested in these. Andy, I'd like to get to Q2.
Yep. Okay, next Janet, Jenny, Alan, Shari and Jess. Janet?
Yeah, hi. So thank you for laying this out. This does look really good. I was curious if you felt like COVID changes this equation at all or possibly even presents opportunities?
Yeah, when we, so when we originally sent out the RFP, it was pre-COVID. But by the time we were interviewing the respondents, we were in, we were in COVID. And we did, in our interview with them, we brought up the question as to how do you see COVID changing both the, the interaction with the board as well as the recommendations that they might present to us or the way that they direct the conversation? And the consultant was definitely attentive or aware of both of those new reality, you know, the new realities. And as I already mentioned, there will be some notification to having our meetings virtually. But they're also going to try to imagine how preparing for COVID would change, would, would impact the choices that we make and the priorities that we have. You know, particularly, I would imagine that our plethora of pathways and open space, we might look at that a little differently in light of COVID and the, and the social distancing that's now required and the need to maybe get out of the house because you're working at home and stuck at home all day. So that stuff is definitely going to come up. Unfortunately, being, we don't have the benefit of hindsight yet, but we'll, we'll do our best to imagine how COVID might change the future. And that will be part of the, part of the project.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, I also appreciate your desire to be a step ahead of, or at least in sync with the county. I think that's really important. So thank you.
Yeah.
Jenny, you're up next.
Yeah, okay. How, what plan do you have to involve residents, stakeholders in this process with the board and staff?
So they're really just intended for leadership, meaning the board. We can have, we can have some discussions about if there will be village involvement or not. But the, the intent of this, of this consultant's project is to help the board come up with some vision, some values, some goals for Columbia, so that as we make decisions going forward, those will guide those decisions.
Let me clarify my question then. Do you see this as an open public meetings?
Probably not, no.
Wait, 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 it doesn't mean that the public has to speak.
Oh.
What I'm talking about is when we're learning, should the public be learning as well? You don't have, you know, if you don't give them a chance to respond, but at least they listen and hear what we're hearing.
Um, I don't, that's not how I imagined it, but if you would like to give some other input, I can listen.
Okay.
Well, let's make sure also we talk to the consultants because the whole, the scope of the work was for the leadership of Columbia Association.
Yeah, that's correct. Then they are anticipating a room, whether that room be virtual or in person, of certain limited size of people. So if there were non-participants in the room, I don't know if that would affect their facilitation or not.
Alan?
Yeah, I just want to put in a giant second for residents being involved in this. This is, if we have any purpose, it's not just as the Board of Columbia Association Incorporated. It's as the Columbia Council, it's as the representatives of the residents of Columbia. And if we're not involving them and including them, then we might as well just have a, go with what we've already done about mission, vision for a CA and be done with it. I want to say I really appreciate a couple of times you mentioned the word advocacy because I think that's, that's huge for me. It's huge for what we said we want as a board and is going to position us to, to be able to advocate for what we, what we want. I will say I'm a little different than my colleague Lynn about that we have these familiar people. To me, that's a, and by the way, my next comments are not to say I'm going to be against this. I think I agree. The proposal is great. There's all kinds of good stuff in there. You've done a lot of great work and all that. My concern, but this now gets to my concerns that I just want us to be paying attention to. I think there's too many familiar people and that Mahan Raichal is too, is, I, my concern is that they are too close to the county, too close to the status quo, too close to what already has been. And may not give us what, what we want in terms of really getting stuff from us as versus getting led to what, what their beliefs are. Part of it boils down to me as to what kind of planned community they see when they think of planned communities. For me, the strength of Columbia's original planning was that it wasn't just a bunch of land use experts or a bunch of building experts or street experts. It was, it included the social end. It included community experts, included sociology experts, Christopher Jenks and others who really have made Columbia, set Columbia on a course 50 plus years ago to be not just another beautiful community, but a community with a real specific sense of, sense of vision and values. That's, I'm, I'm not going to say totally unique, but from all the, everything I know about other planned communities, they mostly focus on brick and mortar and green space and, and how pretty it is and, and how much, how many amenities their, their residents have. And when I think of Columbia, while that's a piece of it, that's not the most important thing. So I'd be interested in not just our lay thoughts as, as 10 residents. I'd be interested in how we can be informed by a variety of experts on what this kind of development can be and should be. I'm done.
Shari and then Jess. Shari?
Shari, you need to. Yes, yes, I just unmuted. Thank you. Yeah, I'd like to give a third to what Alan and, and Jenny just said. As far as stakeholders are concerned, the villages are really important stakeholders. And we have people at the village level who have been here for many years guiding communities. And I think their background will be very important. So we have to think of some way of, of getting them involved, communicating with them. And maybe it's just a matter of, of bringing some of these materials and some of the record. Are these sessions going to be recorded, by the way?
I don't know.
Okay, because, you know, there are pieces, you don't have to record everything, but there are pieces of presentations that could be put up on our website. And that could be part of the ongoing discussion. And then people can get back to us during residents speak out. So I think establishing that as a way of sort of having an ongoing dialogue, it's, it would be a new type of thing that we're doing, but given our virtual situation, that might work out very well. The other thing I was going to suggest when Lynn asked about reading materials, there was a time, I think, when all of the board members got a copy of The Death and Life of Great American Cities, Jane Jacobs. And that is a tremendous book about the, the, the social interactions of cities, of cityscapes. And that's why there's a whole section, she makes a whole series of comments about Jim Rouse and about the funding, founding of Columbia and how Columbia works and things of that kind. So planners are always kind of talking about these. So I have it in paperback if anybody wants to borrow it from me, although I think getting a good, you know, your own copy would be a great idea for background. So, thank you.
What is the name again? Life and Death of Cities?
It's called The Death, The Death and Life of Great American Cities.
Thanks.
I do not have a comment.
Okay, um, so I'm going to ask Nancy, Dick, you haven't had an opportunity yet, any?
Yes, I'd like to say a few words.
All right, Dick, you're up.
First of all, Alan has a very good point about the tightness with our consultant in the county. And we've had some problems in the past with consultants who have an agenda of their own and try to drag us along. I want to make absolutely sure that we end up at the end of this thing with, with a voice. And I want to know how we're going to influence the county with our findings. And to what extent you're keeping in touch with the county to see where they're going. So we, we know if we have to jump in if they start making crazy ideas. Also, Shari's right, that is a great book. Jane Jacobs is a, one of the great writers. She did that book largely because Robert Moses wanted to run a highway through Greenwich Village. And she, she put, put the kibosh on that. So anyway, that's my key thing. How are we going to have a voice in this? How are we going to influence the county? Because they do not seem to share our vision very often. I mean, right now we're having problems with them, we're planning and zoning and some, some, some issues before them. So that's, that's my big question.
Nancy?
Yeah, I, I think that everybody's making really good points. I think that the villages are an essential part of what makes Columbia what it is. And I would like to at least see the village managers to be included in this because they obviously have an awful lot of experience and input as to what makes Columbia what it is. So if there is some way that the 10 village managers, it would limit the number of people, but it would also expose us to not just the 10 of us, but it would also help enhance and add to what we're trying to do here. I would like to see that.
Okay, I did think Renee and Jenny had, and then I'm going to have to move up. Renee, do you have anything?
No.
Okay, Jenny?
Yeah, Kristen and Jessica, I just want to thank you. This has been a lot of hard work and really appreciate especially the fact that maybe we'll be able to be proactive rather than we're usually reactive on these things with the county. And this is really, land use is extremely important subject. What I'm struggling with and appreciate if you give more thought to, I'm not talking about active participants with the public. I'm talking about that, are there some parts of what we're doing, and when I say the public, that includes the village boards, includes all the stakeholders, the business community, everybody. But are there some parts where maybe there's going to be a great presenter on some topic that can be recorded and made available to the public? Then they can get a hold of us as a group and make their comments and say, I think you need to look at this. Then maybe there's another section, I'm not sure this makes sense, but there's another time when we, using our time, because I know when you pay consultants, I've been one, is you have limited hours that they are going to work. So we have to be very disciplined about that. But maybe there's a time when we as a board then get together with the village boards on a virtual thing and listen to what they have to say because they have listened to these presenters. And maybe there's other parts that aren't open to the public. Do you know, do you know, that's it. Okay.
All right, Renee and we're going to wrap up here.
Yeah, that's fine. Jenny, I think that's a great idea that, that we go ahead and keep this schedule. Even if there are meetings that we can broadcast or stream so that the villages or the managers can also be watching them at the same time. But then maybe to find some way to have some feedback groups afterwards that involve the board and village managers or village chairs. I think that's a great idea, Jenny.
Okay, I want to thank everyone. I want to thank Kristen and Jessica for the report and working. And it's really kind of a, a great start. And it's really good to see timelines and, you know, outlines and everything. So, thank you. And we're going to move on now to easement requests. Milton, anything you want to add?
No, I see Alan and Dennis are out there.
All right, Dennis, Al?
If I could get started, there are two sets of easements on the agenda tonight. One for Talbot Springs and the other Tamar and Old Montgomery Road. Both sets of easements were thoroughly reviewed by staff and a number of changes were made. I'm going to provide a thousand foot view for both sets of easements. And then if there are technical questions, Al can put the plans up on the screen. At Talbot Spring, there are.
Was any of this in our packet?
Yes, yes, it was in the packet. Okay, Dennis?
Okay, there are Talbot Springs, there are two stormwater outfalls, one existing and one new. A number of changes were made to those outfalls to satisfy CA requirements. In addition to which, one of the outfalls was existing. And CA asked the school board or the project manager to agree to fund a proportional share of remediation on the stream channel which is heavily eroded. And they agreed to, so they're going, they're going to provide $50,000 in funding, around 50, so that CA can make repairs to that badly eroded stream channel. And that was a significant ask. And that was Al who, who did that, did a great job on it. So that one is fairly straightforward. Any questions on Talbot Springs before I move on? So the second one is three easements or three actually property transfers and some revertable easements for a roundabout at Tamar and Old Montgomery Road. This was taken to the village board. I spoke with Tina, the village manager, supported by the board. In fact, Tina found paperwork dating back to 1999 where the village was proposing this because it is considered a dangerous intersection. A number of changes again were made to the easement request by CA. In addition to which, the village board made a request in regards to the entrance to the Jeffords Hill Neighborhood Center. That adjustment was also made. If you're interested, a revertable easement is an easement whereby grading changes are made to the property and then the property is turned back over to CA. The county has agreed to, it's about 8,000 square feet or about one fifth. or about one-fifth of an acre that is going to be transferred or bought by the county. And they pretty much doubled our expectation in terms of the value of the property. And we didn't argue with them. So we're happy with where they ended up. We don't really want to own road right away. And so I think it makes sense. Any of the zoning requirements that run with the land transferred to the county. So they have to abide by all the zoning that's part of those properties going forward. So there really isn't, there's a net loss of acreage or you know, one-fifth of an acre, but there's no loss to CA to move this forward. And again, the village board is in favor.
Any questions?
Dennis, do you know what they did to resolve the entrance to the neighborhood center?
Al?
Yes, they, there was a median that was elongated that stretched from the roundabout and it came past our entrance, which would have required us to right turn in, right turn out only. And they just simply shortened that median so that it didn't encumber our entrance.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Jenny? Jenny first and then Alan. Jenny, you have to unmute.
Where'd she go?
Jenny?
Jenny.
You have to unmute. We can't hear you.
It somehow disappeared for a second. Okay, what's the date to complete, for completing this roundabout? Al?
Yes, they were hoping to be under construction for that this summer. So they were talking about starting in July. And I think they're still on that track.
Okay.
But, you know, it may take, this paperwork to do this easement, you know, may take, may set them back a little bit, but they still think they're going to get it done this summer.
Okay, thank you.
Alan?
Yeah. This is to Milton, I guess. I looked at the packet that I downloaded on June 5th and this material was not in there. So it may be, then I looked again on the website and the material was in there. So I would, I would, I request strongly that we be clearer about when the packets change so that we can update our pre-read material.
Shari?
Yeah, again, I just want to really thank Al and Dennis, particularly where the Talbot Springs issue is concerned. I think negotiating around that was very, very positive. That also kind of gives us a starting point and a precedent for moving forward if there are other cases like that. And I think, given the circumstances and what we're looking at, you know, 10, 15 years down the line, there are certainly environmental questions that we're going to have to deal with around erosion and the effects of that. So I really give you guys kudos for doing that. Thanks so much.
Any other questions? Okay, unless I hear an objection, I would like to put the approval of these two easements on the consent agenda for our next meeting. Because I don't hear any disagreements. All right, so we'll put them on the consent agenda. Thank you, Dennis, thank you, Al.
And Andy, just, I know Jess is new and Jess, you may be fully informed about what a consent agenda means, but just to be clear, what that means is unless somebody raises an objection between now and the meeting, it's just going to pass without, without an actual vote of the board.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I would have figured it out, but.
Okay, next item is our development tracker. And Milton, anything you want to say?
No, we just got it, Jessica.
Jessica, you're on for the development tracker.
Hey, good evening, everyone. I'm going to attempt to share my screen with you. Can everyone see the Columbia Association logo right now?
Nope.
No.
Nope.
Alrighty, well, I anticipated this might be a problem. So earlier today, I sent you a PDF of my presentation. And I just wanted to quickly go over that with you guys and kind of keep you updated on what's going on. In general, what's happening in the county right now in the COVID situation is that the Department of Planning and Zoning continues to accept meetings and the planning board, hearing examiners and zoning boards are all starting to conduct virtual meetings, which we have been attending and monitoring. Those, as I'm sure you are probably aware yourself, all have some glitches that happen every now and then, but overall, it's been fairly successful process. Oh, thank you, Andy. So as we go to- Janet, Janet's always a queen. So the first meeting I wanted to keep you guys abreast of is the zoning board has continued its hearings of the Hickory Ridge Village Center. They met last night and last week, and they are meeting next week as well. They are, just as a reminder, this is the amendment of the preliminary development plan as outlined in the zoning ordinance. And they are currently in the process of going through opposition testimony and cross-examination. Next week, the zoning board will be taking up the Erickson and Limestone case, which at this point in time, I think the last time you discussed that was almost two years ago. So it's a little bit older. But the next slide, Janet, if you don't mind.
Can I ask a question on that one? Hello?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, on the, well, maybe I'll wait to get to the Erickson one, okay.
Well, moving on that now, so up before you and in your packet or in the PDF I sent you earlier is just a quick overview of that site plan. But just as a reminder, this is a rezoning hearing. So essentially, what's happening is the current property is being, the petitioner is Erickson is asking to rezone the property to the CDF floating zone. With, it's a residential floating zone that essentially allows a lot of flexibility for how you design your site, but also requires a lot of community amenities be added and community enhancements be added. River Hill has been involved in this process and been negotiating in detail with the developers. And they have submitted a letter of support for this project. So that's where we're at. As far as planning staff goes at Columbia Association, we have no recommendations for the board. When you guys have discussed this case, you've been fairly positive towards it. And in our review of this metals, we're sort of at a neutral position of having neither recommendations for support or opposition for the project. And then, are there any specific questions about that, Jenny?
Yeah, yeah, actually both. I've been reading a lot of emails where people feel what the zoning board is doing is allegedly illegal, that you can't have virtual meetings because you can't cross-examine people, et cetera. Some people, their, you know, their system breaks down, they're not able to hear, they're not able to, all sorts of things happen like happened in our, our meetings, virtual meetings. Is there anything, any, anything on that? Or that the zoning board had to change its regs, regulations and didn't to allow for this? Do you hear anything on that?
Well, I have, I have been listening to the cases and catching up on any of my furlough weeks to what happened the prior week. My understanding is there's been quite a bit of discussion about the rules and procedures. But my understanding at this time is that they are proceeding forward saying that their current rules of procedure and how they operate are being translated into the virtual environment. Because I believe that some of the zoning board members are concerned that establishing new rules in the middle of a procedure would not be beneficial. And then there is concern from other zoning board members that the inherent nature of a virtual meeting means that the rules have to change. And so that's a discussion that they are having within their board and that many lawyers have weighed in on. And so at this time, they're proceeding forward with the hearings.
Okay, one other quick question on your comments under CA staff recommendations for the Limestone Valley project. You're basically looking at it in terms of what we all think of as amenities, parks, dog parks, you know, things like that, right?
Well, those are-
Now, what, well, what I'm getting at is it's a community benefit has to be proven, right? And if there are negatives in terms of, one, it's not meeting the need of, that the size of the project isn't meeting the needs of Howard County seniors. Two, could have a negative impact on the hospital, that'll impact on all of Howard County. That's not a benefit. 3D workforce is a serious problem in long-term care. So therefore, the need for more staff, when you're bringing people inside the county and outside the state in order to populate a huge project as compared to a 200-unit project, you are going to draw down on seniors and individuals with disabilities that live at home that need long-term care services and people in other facilities and small group homes, both seniors and individuals. That's not a benefit, that's a negative. Do you, do you deal with that at all or you don't look at that?
I, I do not have an expertise on senior housing. So that's not something that I bring to this observation. And I would say that it's, that is a case that Erickson has to make to the zoning board. And that will be deliberated by the zoning board. But in terms of reviewing this project in context of CA's stated advocacy goals and our stated community goals, I did not see any conflicts with anything that we have stated through guidance that the board has provided and the guidance that the organization itself has, has sort of innovated throughout this process.
Okay, so in conclusion, our guidelines for community benefits do not include the welfare of quality of life to a certain extent in those areas that I mentioned. Okay, thank you.
I would say more particularly that that is a measure of, people have different opinions on that and can bring different evidence to that. But there is nothing with the inherent in the arguments that have been made in the petition that I think warrant CA taking a formal position on it. But it's being raised to you guys in the session so that if there are concerns or questions you have, we can bring that up for you. Okay, thank you.
So may I ask a question or make a comment? Sure, just so everybody knows, I did the negotiating with Erickson on this. And River Hill is a village that has been built without a playground and not nearly as much open space as other villages. Erickson has worked with the planning of the Architectural Review Committee at the county level and the River Hill Village. We have had several concerns, but they've really worked with us to put amenities in their community that would be accessible to our residents and to make those amenities public and to bring their gated, gated community well behind those public facilities. And I don't really want CA to get involved at this point. I mean, I don't think it really matters that much. But I have to say that Erickson, as an organization, has gone out of their way to address our concerns.
Jessica?
Alrighty, Janet, if you won't mind scrolling down to the next slide. And then just letting you know, sort of, those are the upcoming meetings that are, that are going to be monitoring. But the past meetings from last week include the conclusion of the Snowden Crossing case, which is the Starbucks expansion near the Supreme Sports Club. And that that planning board, the end result of that was that the planning board had asked the developer to go back to the drawing board on some of the items, particularly the location of the dumpster. So that's the conclusion of everything I wanted to bring to your attention. Were there any questions about the development plan?
Any questions?
Yes, excuse me, you didn't, just, could you explain just one more? Limestone Valley Farm?
Limestone Valley Farm?
Yeah.
I think that is the Erickson case. It's historical. Yeah, sorry, Limestone Valley is sort of the community colloquial name of the area. And so Erickson is basically kind of calling the community Erickson at Limestone Valley. So that's its official title on some documents.
Oh, okay, the reason I was asking, it's, Erickson is on one page. And then, okay, all right, so it doesn't say Erickson on this page, okay. So it's not other property adjacent to it that is agricultural and they're trying to get that boundary changed. It's not, not another parcel. It's those two-
Are you down in the newly submitted plans section?
I'm down in WP-20-108 line.
Yeah, I misunderstood that. So what's happening is actually, that is the same location. Essentially, what's happening is the Erickson case is being built on 62 acres of land that currently subdivided into three different properties. But the subdivision lines do not mirror the existing agricultural conservation easements. And so in anticipation of what's going on with Erickson, the landowner is moving forward with re-subdividing the property to better match the agricultural conservation area. And that will also match the 62 acres of the Erickson property. Thank you, Janet, that has been helpful. So that's what's happening with that. It's simply a re-sub, like they're changing subdivision lines for the property.
I'm sorry, will the property remain in agriculture or it'll be changed to residential?
There is a section of the property that is not currently agricultural that will, is the property that is planned to be conveyed to Erickson. And the new actual property lines and how it's subdivided will, will mirror that, that line.
The agricultural, okay, the residential.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So there is no change in the use that is proposed as part of this.
And this is, this is not, this is the property owner submitting, this is a separate case.
Yeah, it's the property owner, yeah.
That's what I was getting, okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I used to live down the street from those folks. And I believe Limestone Valley Farm was what they called their farm.
Yes.
Which Warfield, which has since been, you know, after elderly folks passed on and things have changed. And I guess, just so we're all clear, I believe I'm correct in saying this all borders Columbia, but it's not Columbia property. This is, this is Howard County, not, not Columbia.
Right, yeah, on the screen right now, you can see that the kind of blue shaded sections, that's sort of the outer limits of the Columbia border. So what's actually considered part of Columbia. And so this is essentially just across the street.
Okay, any other questions for Jessica?
Good job.
Thank you, Jessica. Okay, we're going to move on to capital projects and open space updates. Milton, anything you want to say?
No, Dennis is out there.
Dennis is right here. So I am sharing my screen. If you can let me know when it comes up on your screen.
It's up.
It's up.
Okay, so the, it's good to be, so we had a repair job at River Hill. It was an extensive repair, but it was repaired nonetheless. And we were able to, we had all the materials that were necessary in stock. One thing I'd like to start with by saying is that there's a quote, which isn't exactly this, but it says, "Never have so few done so much for so many." And so I'm thinking about the open space staff and the few of them that have worked really hard during this whole COVID pandemic. And I had one come up to me today, and we're working hard with Dan Burns to get the sports disorders back open. And there's a lot of little things that have to get done. And he's came up to me and said, "Look, I'm not working next week, but I'll come in for free." And I said, "If I need you, I can pay you." But it was just really, and there had been several times where team members have gone above and beyond their call of duty to get things done.
And Dennis, can I just thank you for what you did repairing that bridge? Because it was really dangerous and a bad spot off the street. And I was afraid kids were going to go down there with all that water sitting there. And it was not going to be a good thing. So thank you very much for your quick work.
Dennis, do you have the before picture?
I do have the before, you're right, I skipped it. There you go.
That's the before.
Yeah, it was massive.
That's, that's my guys in the shop making, making the bridge parts. And that's the after picture. So Russell Leaf Street Stabilization, what's interesting about that- So Russell Leaf Street Stabilization, um, what's interesting about that is, uh, Rob Plummer, who runs that, uh, division, and he's not two feet tall. He's like six feet tall. So that is, that shows you how deep the cut is there. And I think Andy's probably familiar with this. And we're working on this, um, right now.
Thank you, Dennis.
Yes. So at the fitness clubs and at some of the other sport, sport, um, sports park, swim centers, some other places, Haven, we have installed a number of these U V sanitizing fans. They're used in the, um, medical community, but basically the air goes in the back and as it comes out, 99.1% of all the bad bacteria and viruses are killed. So it helps to sanitize the air. So we have a number of these spread throughout the facilities in, um, high-volume areas. Um, the metal have been adjusted, I think everyone knows that. Woods, it's amazing how good Symphony, if I can just keep the people out of Symphony Woods. It will look, it will look gorgeous. It really looks great. We're really proud of working and it's, it's going, it's going to look better as it's used because we, you know, the aeration and, um, just the, the extra maintenance that was, uh, the time that was spent on it.
Nancy had a question, Dennis.
Well, I'm sorry, Nancy?
You, I'll let you finish and then I'll ask.
Okay. Um, so the dog park is open and, um, we, you know, people are happy. Um, and we haven't yet had a problem with a number of people who have wanted to use it not being able to get in. Uh, Town Center Gardens, so there, so in the high-use area, our goal is to maintain all of the high-use areas in our, with our standard maintenance protocols. So the, the lakes, Lake Elkhorn, Wild Lake, Lake Kilkundie, um, high use, uh, we're paying as much attention to those areas as we ever have. And we're fading a little bit in some of the, what I call the backwoods areas. Uh, we're not getting to them as quickly.
Dennis, question. In the past, when I've seen open space workers doing that kind of planting and so on, that's shown there, uh, they're pretty close together. What do you all, or maybe just a yes, no question?
They're not supposed to be close together. They're supposed to be staying, uh, social distancing, they have masks, we have sanitizing agents, they all, um, arrive and depart in different trucks. They don't, they don't share vehicles, they don't share mowers. Um, so if you see that, um, if you can let me know, I'll talk to them.
Yeah, I'm saying this is in the past, so I appreciate that, that different standards are in place now. Thank you.
And then, um, I have this great video that I don't think you have seen. So with that, I'll take any questions?
Nancy?
Yeah, um, you showed those lovely fans that sanitize the facilities. So my question is an obvious one. Will you be putting those up in the village, uh, community centers?
So in the high-volume spaces, they, I think they might, they probably make sense. And, um, as soon as we're back, um, you know, we're back, the staff is back 100%, um, because you have Jeremy and that team are 100% furloughed. I've made arrangements, or make arrangements to prioritize meeting with each of the village managers to walk their facilities. They, the pins probably don't make sense in small rooms. In that case, a simple HEPA, um, rated, um, air cleaner probably is, is, is worthwhile. But they probably, in the, uh, theater room at Slaton House, I'd put one up. Um, in Cato Hall, in Ballroom, in Oakman Manor, in the, in the big room, if it doesn't, uh, if they don't object to that look too much, Stonehouse in their big room, um, places like that where there's a lot of volume and people.
Jenny?
Thank you.
Um, Jenny, you have to.
Dennis, Dennis, did you, Andy, I got it. Dennis, did you, um, notice that a lot of the tape, uh, telling people, you know, you can't use the playground, you can't use the totlot has been coming down?
Yes.
And I assume it, it could be weather, you know, storms.
I don't think it's weather, Jenny.
Could be people. So we, we are, we are in the process of making arrangements to reopen the totlots. Um, and, um, they all won't open on the same day and there'll be, you know, 150 that will open almost immediately. And there might be 20 or so that will lag behind by actually a couple of months in terms of the amount of work that needs to take place on them. But if you say 150 out of 170, um, that's a big number. So we expect that, um, the county is, um, going full steam ahead and opening all of their playgrounds, basketball courts and parks. And we've been in contact with the Howard County Health Department, which is state-run, and parks and rap about how, how C A fits into that and opening our totlots.
Will we have enough money to do that?
Well, we don't have enough money to fix the ones that aren't ready to open, but we have enough money to open the ones that are ready to open with that.
Any other questions for Dennis?
Uh, yeah, I, I have one.
Okay, Shari and then Dick.
And Janet, please.
And Janet, sorry.
Um, yeah, Dennis, I just wanted to ask you, um, what kind of timeline are we looking for, for the totlots? Do you have any dates?
I think, um, certainly by the middle of next week, I'll have totlots open.
Okay, great, thank you.
Dick? And then Janet.
Yes, so Dennis, I have a neighbor in the air conditioning business and I've been talking to him about this. He says he's installing a lot of, uh, MERV 13 filters. Are you familiar with that?
Yes.
You know, he, uh, says that these are really good at trapping viruses, but they don't allow the compressors to freeze up.
So it's, uh, the compressors freeze up when the airflow, when the airflow is too restricted. And so each, each unit has to be looked at individually for which filter is in there now. And all of our new stuff comes with MERV 13.
Oh, they do? Okay, good.
The older stuff, um, if we can't get the right airflow, if the MERV 13 filter restricts the airflow too much, it's not a good fit. So it'll go everywhere, but where they can go, they will.
Okay, thank you.
Janet?
Uh, I just wanted to say two things. One, the perennials around the signs in Longreach look amazing, so thank you. And two, um, the residents of Longreach have taken care of opening the totlots for you. So.
Okay, I'll give them some, um, hammers and nails next.
Any other questions for Dennis?
Yeah, I, I have one. I, I have one. I, I appreciate your answer. I was going to ask the same question that Nancy did about those fans. Uh, are there any other, and besides these, whatever kind of filters that you were just talking about with Dick, are there any other protective devices or arrangements or whatever that we're putting into some buildings but not others?
Um, so aside from the fans, we're making adjustments to HVAC systems, um, but no, we're not, I don't have anything besides these, um, sanitizing fans, no.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Nancy, your turn, you're up.
Um, I understood and I probably misunderstood, but please tell me if I'm wrong, that there was going to be some work on HVAC filters in facilities that is not used or that are not used by the villages. Am I wrong?
Um, so anywhere we can install MERV 13 filters, we will. So whether.
Go ahead.
All some, um, most of our new stuff, not most, but our new stuff comes with MERV 13. So if, so when we replace filters, Jeremy's going to go by each of the villages and meet with each of the village managers when he's back off furlough. And, um, he'll look at each, at each system, each filter, and then also recommend placement if appropriate for those sanitizing fans.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Dennis. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Next item up is a status report on the 2021 operating budget. Milton, anything you'd like to say?
Well, Susan's is out there, but this was just placed on the agenda in case there is some updates to provide. We don't really have any updates provided from the media, since the meeting from last week.
Okay, Susan, anything? Let me, Susan, anything you want to add?
Um, no, I don't. Well, I'll, I'll just give you an update on the process. So we, um, worked really, uh, all weekend, uh, to get the updates in the system on Saturday and, uh, and, and are still in the process of, um, we have to run allocations and there are a couple more adjustments. But we did get posted on the C A website, the summary, um, page of the, the organization wide summary and, and the capital, the revised capital budget and a letter that kind of explains, you know, where we've come from, the budget that was approved in February. So, so there is at least on some very summary current information out there for the community, um, while we work on, um, developing a few more, you know, a little bit more behind that. At the same time, we're working on the fourth quarter financial report and the audit. So we've got all these kind of converging reporting requirements. So we're, uh, moving as fast as we can on this.
Okay, questions? Alan, you had a question?
Yes, I did.
Alan?
You calling me? Okay, thank you. Uh, first of all, I want to appreciate, uh, you all for asking us whether we needed, uh, paper copies of things. That was a question we probably should have asked, uh, years and years ago, but I'm, I'm glad we're doing it now. The, I, I would love to hear, Milton, I, I'm not asking for a final, like, answer, like you're ready to do whatever, but I'd just like to hear a response to what you heard at Resident Speak Out about the clay courts.
Alan, I would have to have that, uh, Dan and our tennis pro reach out to that gentleman. My biggest concern I have about that is that anyone doing work on C A's property, the liability. I will tell you that gentleman, he made it, he oversimplified the whole process, but if, we can talk to him. But I'm, I'm, I, I will not, I cannot commit to it until we can have a conversation and we can look into it from a, from the perspective of a C A.
Thank you. I wasn't asking for a commitment, just wanted to hear what your response was. Thank you.
Jenny?
Yeah, um, Milton and Stan, and the, uh, Dan and anybody else that's involved in that, I certainly appreciate your willingness to look at it. It's kind of a, a new partnership, uh, thinking out of the box type approach.
But Jenny, I, I, I ask you, please don't call it a partnership because partnerships gets us in trouble.
Yeah, I had, I was going to have a comment on that, but never mind. Okay, that got me in trouble. The other thing real quick that I'm, I'm just very concerned about is, uh, the emails that we've been getting about, um, uh, our swimmers that want to use the outdoor pool being solicited by other pools. It's pretty serious. And people, it's $495 for a family. It's cheaper than what we would charge at an outdoor pool is what I'm hearing. And apparently there are people seriously considering jumping and going to, uh, these other pools. One's in Catonsville, that's really make it a, a PR approach. People have a lot of ideas. I still wonder if we can't get together with them and listen, and they're very reasonable.
Now, Jenny, please, we, the board has, the board has finalized the budget and we, we, we deal with this all the time, whether it's a fitness club, a tennis club, people have options and I applaud them if they want to explore them, but they, we need to put the outdoor pools behind us for this, for this calendar year. I, I ask the board, please.
Shari?
I'd like to get, I'd like to get back in the queue, Andy.
Shari?
Yeah, thank you. I was going to ask, since we have, um, been flooded with emails from the residents, um, whether anyone at C A is, uh, tracking the numbers, actually counting the numbers of emails that have come through and tracking the, um, the issues that people have raised. In other words, um, I, you know, it, obviously, um, there are tennis people who are concerned, great flood, mostly about pools, um, about camps. Um, so where, where is that information going and is anybody going to be analyzing that?
Shari, my last conversation with Paul was, was, um, well, earlier this week. Yes, we, we are tracking it. We are, we are separating it based on the nature of the, of the, uh, the inquiry that the, uh, the person is making, yes.
Andy, can I jump in?
Can I, wait, can I just finish up here? I, I had asked a question about who was responding to inquiries. For example, um, we got an inquiry from, um, a delegate, a Howard County delegate. Who, who's in charge of responding to those? I've been responding to people from my village, but who is in charge of responding to those kinds of inquiries?
Well, our practice has been in the past, when, when inquiries came to the board through their website, we have staff member responding, I mean, compiling the information and responding. Now I have to find out what is, what is our work schedule right now, but that's still part of her responsibility.
Okay, so there's always somebody rotating in to do that.
Well, I don't know whether rotating or the person, Susan, can you help me? Is, is Maria on? I know that she's on furlough and I think she's on the 50% one.
Yeah, so, so she is, but there'd be somebody tracking that behind, behind her. So, um, so there's not, we wouldn't leave that unfilled and I don't know who it is, but we can follow up and find out. We're definitely tracking all of that information and, and we would not let something like that go unadvised.
Okay, I think if we could get those figures, that would be very, um, helpful to the board. Thank you.
Okay, um, I put myself in the queue. So Milton, uh, Governor, relax, some of our, um, restrictions. What's our plan?
Well, what's your plan regarding what, the fitness clubs?
Yeah, the, yeah, the fitness clubs, let's go.
Okay, Dan is out there.
How much time do you have?
Um, so. Sorry, Dan.
We had prepared, um, after the golf and tennis opened, uh, I kind of had a gut feeling around the middle of June, so we had targeted being ready to be open on June 15th. Um, so this week is our final week of preparing, so we are ready to open, not this coming Saturday, because we're not allowed to open until next Friday. Uh, the following Saturday, we wouldn't open at five o'clock on a Friday night and close a couple hours later. So I believe that's the 20th. Uh, we'll open the Swim Center, uh, the three fitness clubs, Haven, the Sports Park and Longreach Center.
All right, Alan, you're up.
Yeah, um, and the, the Swim Center will be with, I assume, some severe restrictions?
Actually, we're sorting through that because the, the restrictions changed in the middle of the day today. Um, and as we're trying to sort through them, um, they're not going to be severe. We're just trying to figure out how to manage the social distancing with all of that. It's actually going to be, uh, pretty liberal with social distancing. It's very similar to what the first round of outdoor pools was.
Except that we didn't open any, so. And be prepared, be prepared for even more.
Except that we didn't open any. So, um, and be prepared, be prepared for even more loud outcry. Uh, I, I want to go, I know, I'm going to come back to this, but my second thing is, I just want to make sure that we're, when we're talking about responding to messages, whether it's Maria or whoever, uh, we got a report at the end of, I think it was May, that said there were four messages or two messages or something for all of May, when we knew there'd been dozens. And then we were told, when, when that was brought to people's attention, we were told, we'll get right on that. Granted, it's only been a couple of weeks, but I would like to make sure that that's still on people's radar, uh, to let us know how those people who were reaching out were responded to. Finally, I'm not sure if this is a statement to Milton or a question to my fellow board members. I thought we had approved the budget with the proviso that we were going to reach out to work with stakeholders to see if there were creative ways to open up X number of pools. And so to simply say, we decided on the budget period closed, if I'm correct, and other board members have a similar recollection is not sufficient to me.
Dick?
A couple, couple of things. Uh, on the 15th, uh, Dan, you said you were going to open the Swim Center, Haven, what else?
No, on the 20th. On the 20th, three fitness clubs, Haven, Long Beach Tennis and Sports Park.
Fitness, three fitness clubs?
Yeah.
Fitness.
I mean, why not?
Okay. Um, so I've got that down. Swim Center, Haven, three fitness clubs, uh, and the tennis facility. Is that correct?
And then the sports park.
Yeah. And, and the sports park. Thank you. Now, the other thing, I recognize that uh, a lot of our staff is on furlough, but there are things that have to be done and the board has said that it will step in, uh, to do whatever we can to, to help the load. One of these we have to do, and this is not just a matter of tabulating the calls that we're getting and the letters we're getting, we have to answer those. Now, we have a communications plan that's out there floating around that people have been, uh, helping me with. And the thing is, we can't dawdle on this. I wrote a, a form letter that I sent out this afternoon regarding the pools. I've got three, four pages now, I think, of, of, of letters from, uh, people who are interested in the swimming situation. And if, if staff's not going to answer these letters immediately, uh, I will do it myself. I know Jeff, uh, has done a good job of answering a lot of those letters, uh, but we gotta do it. And, uh, I won't do anything until staff's had a chance to look at it, the board's had a chance to look at this, uh, draft letter I put together. But if I don't hear any objections by noon tomorrow, I'm hitting the send button. And, uh, I think this is something that just has to be taken care of. We can't, we can't put it off.
Nancy, then Renee and then Jenny. Nancy?
No, keep going. Go to Janet.
Sorry. Um, all right. Renee, Jenny, Janet.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just confused how we can open the Swim Center, which is indoors and more dangerous, rather than two outdoor pools. I, I get that Milton doesn't want to talk about it, but I'm elected by people who are furious and I agree that this has now become a community issue. It's one of the primary reasons people moved to Columbia and we have not pivoted very well. So I, I won't say anything else. I'll, I'll take it to the, to my residents.
Well, Dana, can you get in there and explain like you did to me today?
And be careful because you were training lifeguards indoors when the Swim Center was supposed to be closed. Yes?
We got permission from the health department.
And what? Okay. All right. Then I stand corrected. You got permission.
We do everything by the book.
Then take care of the residents.
We are. This is the most efficient way to take care of the residents. Indoor facilities, the infrastructure is already in place and significantly cheaper to operate. The outdoor pool, I have organized completely separate infrastructure that is substantially more expensive for a very short amount of time. The best case we could have, we have the outdoor pool open for six weeks. And we cost $37,000 a month per pool to have those pools open for six weeks.
Dan, we're not asking for all of them. We're asking for two or three.
Then, then you get into the issue of, now, I have 480,000 visits to the pool last summer. I have pools, let's take River Hill, for example. The maximum capacity at River Hill is 550 people.
Right.
So right now with the change, I can have 225 people in that pool.
Right.
How am I going to get 480,000 visits into two pools when my capacity is down? I'm down from 23 to two pools. So I'm, you're going to get to come in for five minutes, get in the water, and then I'm going to throw you back out because I gotta get the next person in to try to satisfy the whole community. There is not a good answer. We agonize over this. We worked until the last minute, until the board voted the, the third revision of the budget. We were working on getting the pools, nine pools physically ready to open. We wanted to open the outdoor pools, but it is just not financially possible and it creates an experience that no matter how much the members may want it now, they will be more upset because of what we end up delivering them, because it's horrific.
Jenny, and then Janet.
I can get the clippers in. I can get recreational swimming in. I can get lap swimming in. I can do so much more in the indoor pools at such a lower cost as compared to a couple outdoor pools.
Thanks, Dan. Jenny, and then?
I'll take it to the.
Uh, oh, okay. All right. Just, just, just a few things here. Alan, in response to your question or your understanding that at one of our last meetings, we had, uh, voted to instruct the staff to, uh, work creatively with the community on the outdoor pool situation. That failed. It was a five to five vote. Cause I, that was my motion and you were helping on that and it failed. Um, so, uh, the other thing is with the indoor pools, is there any way we can communicate? And again, pardon this, there's a lot of problems here, but one of the most serious one is communicating. Um, the clippers don't even know that they're going to have an opportunity to use the indoor pools. They want to start practicing now from the emails we're getting. Is there any way that we can talk to them? Maybe talk to the, uh, the other group that was the outdoor swim team, set aside some time where they can get in the pool, indoor pool. Um, they're not asking to be there every day. That's not what I'm hearing. Uh,
Until they know this afternoon, they won't allow.
What, what?
Until they know this afternoon, they won't allow. And even the governor's orders from yesterday didn't allow it to happen. They changed the middle of the day. They sent out a revised order that expanded the use of indoor pools.
Yeah.
We are scrambling now to readjust our plan so we can get even more people. We're, we're now allowed, as of this afternoon, we're allowed to be waiting. We weren't allowed to have any waiting pool or anything like that open as of this morning.
Yeah. Well, what, just, just a quick thing. One thing I was hearing from some people that claim they're experts in this, I thought you just get one person in a lane, we'd only be allowed. They're saying for the.
That's changed dramatically.
You can allow, you can, right. You can allow four people and some, you know, or five if you, depending on who you're talking to. So that's a lot more people.
And that's what I'm saying. We, we have to go back into the drawing room because everything's changed in the last 24 hours.
But it's even, yeah, if it's just the kids in the summer swim team, not to have the swim team again, but just the kids in there, that could be an outdoor pool with, apparently they can do four kids in a lane, which I was surprised about. I could just see one adult in a lane. So I, I just hate that we, I don't know, we just don't seem to be communicating. But there, we're going to get really knocked on opening the Haven. That's the luxury.
Okay, Janet?
So, uh, I just wanted to confirm. So Dan, are you saying you can have four people per lane now?
Yes.
In the pool. The number. Renee, Dan, please answer. Thank you.
So I'm allowed, what I, what you have to do is you have to take the square footage of the pool surface and divide it by 36, and then that's how many people you can have in the pool.
And so what?
All the individual pools off the top of my head. Um, just for example, I remember the, a couple outdoor pools. River Hill, under that same scenario, was only allowed 163 people compared to the 550. Um, so, uh, the, um, uh, so it's going to be, um, I think that the, the Haven's the smallest, um, but, uh, so yeah.
Five indoor pools where people can do lap swim and recreational swim?
Correct.
And so do the same rules apply outside? I'm just curious, not because I'm advocating for it, but.
Yes. Uh, you're, you're allowed 50% capacity in the facility, but the usage in the pool stays the same. So you're allowed more people in the pool area.
Uh huh.
But you still have to maintain social distancing, but the pool usage still stays the same.
And what, for the outdoor pools, what is the situation with lounge chairs?
It's the same thing. They have to be socially distanced, um, and they have to be cleaned after every use. Um, so one person per chair. Uh, there's, there's a significant amount of work that goes into managing the outdoor pools, um, to, to make it, to make it happen.
Yeah. I mean, I'm, I'm not asking for you to defend. I mean, my point in asking these questions is simply, I think as of earlier today, before those regulations were changed, our best case scenario, even for an outdoor pool, was to open only for lap swim and potentially deep water fitness. But under zero circumstances, could I see the likelihood of recreational swim? You know, Nancy, to your point, to one of your residents, all of us would love to sit in a lounge chair with a book and let our kids play in the pool, but that is simply not a reality under current conditions. And I think with that in mind, five indoor pools is still a pretty good representation, um, especially since it also supports the ability for our fitness centers to open and provide a, an important income stream for CA. So my second question then is, can we get this information on our homepage of our website, please? So people can see it front and center. And I mean, I understand that it's changing. So I mean, you know, I know that there's a lot of stuff that maybe we can't include, but I just feel like we're really not reaching people as evidenced by the hundreds of emails that keep pouring in. And I would really like us to be able to communicate what we have been doing because I know everyone's been working really hard. And I just want everyone to get credit for all of the thought and effort that they have put into this and ensure that we are not abandoning our members. And, you know, recognizing that they, they could choose to go somewhere else, but, um, you know, we're doing what we can do responsibly to try to provide something for our members. So I've really, I'm just begging us to please put that someplace where residents and members can access it.
Good.
Andy?
Okay. Wait a minute. And Nancy might have had, Nancy, do you have anything?
No, no, go ahead.
Jenny?
Okay. A real, real quick follow-up on Janet's question there. Um, there are people that don't belong to the fitness clubs. They're only summer members for the outdoor pools. Okay. Um, is there anything that you've considered that you could offer them, um, to use the indoor pools? Janet's got a good point. We got five indoor pools. Is there any way there could be some compromise worked out there where they can use it even once a week and pay a summer membership or twice a week on a, a point basis? Do you know what I mean?
Membership has access to the Swim Center.
What?
The, the play membership has access to the Swim Center.
Is, is the play membership just pools, outdoor pools?
It's outdoor pools.
And all the other stuff, right? Yeah.
Swim Center, uh, ice rink.
Yeah, yeah. But excuse me, my question is, if you just, do you have to have a play membership to go to the outdoor pools in the?
You have to have at least a play member. You have to have some membership with play in it.
So is that the 600 they're referring to in this other group, uh, private sectors offering for $495 to have them use their pools?
Yeah. I, I would, I would be hard pressed. I don't know the number off the top of my head, but.
Okay.
I would be hard pressed to think anybody's charging less than we are for our pool.
So, so, so they could pay the play membership and join the indoor and go to the Supreme Court or go, or just to the Swim Center?
No, just to the Swim Center.
Okay. So were we letting them know that? I mean,
They're aware of that if they have the play membership. It's part of the membership.
Oh, I don't assume that.
So are we saying that there is no just summer pool membership anymore?
No, there hasn't been for a long time.
Okay.
Nobody has that. No kids do that? No, nobody does that?
No, nobody does that. We don't, we haven't had that for a long time. So we can remind everybody that the play membership gives them access to the Swim Center. But that has been, um, that's been part of the, even before we made the play membership, it was the Swim Center and outdoor pool membership.
Okay. Shari? You got a question?
Yeah, I do. Um, so the, the indoor, the, the Swim Center can't possibly accommodate all the people who have play membership, um, particularly families. I was trying to think if there's, you know, we're looking at this and what we're seeing and what we're hearing is the perception that there's nothing for families in Columbia this summer. And with the camps being closed and with the outdoor pools being closed and people have paid the lien and are continuing, they have the annual charge. Um, what can you suggest for families? In other, I'm, I'm being very serious about this. Is there something, we keep saying, put something up on the website. Is there something we can put on the website that speaks to our clients and customers, long-term customers, about what families can do? Not what they can't do, but what they can do, um, with our sports and fitness this summer?
That's why we're open in the sports park. We're gonna look at getting the ice rink open early, um, so they have the ice rink. Um, we have ice, ice teams that want to rent the ice. Um, so that would help defray the cost there. Um, and, uh, you know, there is the tennis. Uh, I don't know what Michelle has planned for the summer. Um, but, you know, everything that we have except for the outdoor pools is going to be open this summer for sport and fitness.
Not for families, so.
Good. Somebody moved their, moved their, Renee?
So Susan, uh, Krabi, I have a question. Is it possible to get a month-by-month ramp-up cash flow of sports and fitness so we can see what the losses are going to look like if we're only expecting about 50% of the membership?
Well, we, we have the CA-wide one. You want, it, it really wouldn't be much different from that, but we.
So.
I'll have to look at pulling that. Well, I'd have to pull out open space.
Right. I, I want to see.
If the whole board would vote on that and tell me to, I'll do it, but I don't want to put the resources into that.
Well, I'm, I'm fine if they don't want to do it. We can certainly ask the board. I just think it's important to know what kind of losses we're going to incur and how much of the annual charge we're going to use to ramp up everything, but not open the pools for families.
So, so we had, that's what the budget is. So that budget that is, is exactly that. So, um,
Right.
Want to see it.
So I can just, so I can just, you take the sports and fitness figures that you have on the division or whatever you call it, and say that that, that we're going, these are the numbers that we're going to achieve for, I, I'm just curious, how much of assessment money are we using to finance sports and fitness? Okay. If you're opening all these things, which I understand as from a business perspective that that's what you want to do, how much are we going to take? Because we're not going to have a line of credit to borrow. So if we have 20 million left over after we pay off the line of credit and whatever else, are we going to use 10 of it to finance sports and fitness or how much? And then where does that leave us in March and April? Right. Because we're going to incur some losses on everything, I think.
Yeah.
I have a question.
The budget and it's, and that's, that's what, that's what the budget reflected. And as far as the, uh, I do expect that to be the line of credit. I don't know why they put it on.
Well, have we gotten a new line of credit?
Um, not yet, but we're, we've made some progress and the old one does not expire till the end of October.
So we can borrow in September and October?
Correct.
Okay.
Question.
Nancy and Jenny?
Last question.
And Alan.
I just, if you could just tell me, Susan, I just, if, if you could just tell me, Susan, will our line of credit thirty days after we've paid it off, will we be able to re-up the same line?
So I'm not sure, I understand your question.
I understand that you're supposed to wait, from the time you pay it off, let's say you pay it off September fifteenth, that you have to wait thirty days before you can go back to the same line of credit to borrow again if you needed to.
That's my question. That, um, that is not in our current line of agreement or, or
It's not.
No. So, um, I, I, um, don't know how that would apply.
I think it depends on the lender.
Okay, Jenny?
Yeah. A quick question for Dan. Dan, um, I don't remember how many people you said used the outdoor pools a year ago. Um, I thought it was about four hundred thousand, but if they can use the swim center only, if they have a play membership, that's the second condition. Um, what's the reality if we tell people that? And what is, it's going to be by appointment or something? Do you have any process in mind? Because what's the reality of a huge number buying a play membership and they just can't get in there? So have we thought it through in terms of, or how, what have we thought through?
We've thought through that we don't anticipate selling any play memberships. Um, and we don't anticipate billing for the play memberships until the fall. Um, so we, we, we've thought that through. Um, we're going to, like I said, the rules changed on us twice since yesterday. So the team is working diligently right now to figure out what we're going to do, but the last I talked with Marty, um, we were looking at how to get the clippers in, how to get recreational swimming in and how to get lap swimming in across all of our pools in a way that maximizes what space we do have available.
I, I'm sorry, you, you're saying now you don't expect these people that swim only in the summer in outdoor pools to buy play memberships to use the swim center? I thought before we said that was an option for them.
It is an option, but I don't think, like, a lot of people will buy, sell a lot of play memberships in June. We're not going to sell the, the play memberships in June. Um, I think we have, we have about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in play memberships right now. Um, and, uh, uh, so those are the people that are between tennis, the clippers and, and outdoor pool users.
Okay, let, last thing. We're getting all these emails. I want an outdoor pool. I want my kids swimming. So you're telling me that now that we tell them that they can use the swim center, they are not going to do it? They're either going to put a little pool in their backyard?
It's there, everybody can use it.
But are you going to have enough space? I'm just asking if.
I'm not gonna, with restrictions, I'm not gonna have enough space for anything that I do. I'm only allowed ten people in a group fitness class. I can only use every other piece of equipment in the fitness center. I have restrictions, just like every other business that you go to. We all have restrictions we're operating. We're not, nobody's operating at full capacity. Right now. Restaurants are at fifty percent capacity. Nobody can serve everybody to a hundred percent capacity right now.
No, I know that. What I'm just finally saying is people, consumer beware. People need to know that if they buy a play membership for their family or themselves to do laps in the swim center, there should be something there that says, by the way, these are the restrictions. It's just making
Our sales team will be everything we can do to get a hundred percent like we always do.
Okay, okay.
All right. I have Alan, Janet and Jess.
Yeah. Well, and what I thought I heard you say, Dan, is that you're not going to sell play memberships?
No, that's not what I said. I just don't expect many people to buy them in the volume that we've sold.
Okay, I, I thought you said you were going to sell them. So, okay, I hate to take you back, but me, I've been to outdoor pools and I've been to the swim center. I've been to Supreme. Maybe at Supreme, one can socially distance inside the facility. But in the swim center, there is no way to pass down the hallway to get to the pool six feet apart. The hallway is not six feet wide, I don't think. Uh, I, I, you, you made a statement, at least I thought I heard you make a statement, that the logistics in an outdoor pool were so much more complicated than in the indoor pool. It seems to me in an outdoor pool, you chuck all the, the chairs. So people have to bring their own blankets if they want one to sit on. You only allow certain number, you know, someone to go to the bathroom and then come out and then the next person go in. So one person in the bathroom at a time. People change at home and change back at home. And they maintain their social distance. I, I, I don't get how that's harder in an outdoor pool than, than in the indoor pool. Where, where the, where the, like at the swim center where the, the pool apron or whatever you call it is so much smaller than in an outdoor pool.
Because I'm restricted by how many people can be there based on that. There's significantly less people than would be in an outdoor pool waiting to get in the pool. And what people do in an indoor pool is different than what they're going to do in an outdoor pool. I think somebody, I think Janet was saying, you know, you go to an outdoor pool, you want to lounge in the sun, you want to hang around. You want to play around, watch the kids splash around. When you come to the indoor pool, like in the waiting pool, we're probably going to have reservations for family. You come in, you can play with the kids. There might be two families there for a half an hour. Then we have to go on and get the next one. So it, it's a much different, you're there to swim, you're not there to lounge and relax and hang out like you are in an outdoor pool. It's a different, different environment.
Janet and then Jess. Janet?
I'm good, Andy. Thanks.
Okay, sorry. Jess?
Yeah, I just wanted to get clarification. Dan, did I hear you say you're not going to be billing sit and play until the fall?
No, just play.
So you're not going to bill play?
Correct.
But if we're, if we're offering them the swim center, couldn't conceivably, we, and the sports park and some of the other things, couldn't we conceivably start billing again?
We're, we're going to find an alternative solution for people to opt-in. Um, because the outdoor pools, it's, it's hard to peel apart the people that have the membership just for the outdoor pools because there are so many different things mixed up in there. So we're, we're working on an opt-in solution for that, that population. Um, I think, we, we talk about the community and taking care of, I think the worst thing we could do right now would be to tell them we're not going to open the outdoor pools and then bill them for it.
Gotcha. So I, I do, I agree with you. I think an opt-in system is, the quicker you can get that up, the better. Because I hear from people all the time who are like, we're willing to pay so CA can have more money. So hopefully more services can open. Now granted, there may be some sort of, you know, expectation that if we get enough money that then they want the outdoor pools to open. But that, I have also heard from people who just are, don't mind paying their dues. Um, you know, to, to sort of keep, keep everything afloat. So I would definitely say that the quicker you can do that and the easier you can get it up, um, I think that will be well received because people are asking me, how can I help? And I, you know, what I want to be able to tell them is call and have them start charging you again.
Yeah, it's, it's hard to do on an individual basis, just the system.
I totally get it. I, I totally get it. But, um, yeah.
Eighteenth, which coincides with opening next weekend. So we actually met this afternoon. Um, to start, kind of, now that we have details of what we're allowed to do and what we're going to do, uh, we're, we're finalizing the details on that.
Okay, great. That was all I had.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Stan. Thanks, Milton. Um, next item, chairman's remarks. I submitted in writing. Very brief. Maybe someday when we start getting other activities going, I have a few more things to report. Um, president's remarks. Milton, anything you want to say?
No, I'm fine.
Any questions for Milton? All right. Propose new topics.
I have one more question for Dan.
Sure.
I'm sorry. Uh, Dan, I want to make sure I have this right. Uh, you're saying it's, it was, uh, what was it, thirty-seven thousand dollars a month to open one pool? Is that correct?
Correct.
Because, uh, the last time we talked, it was like two hundred thousand dollars per pool for the summer. I, I don't know where that number came from.
Um, I don't know where that number came from either. I mean, I put all the details in the, for the nine pools, it's about a million dollars for the season. The pools range sixty to a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars a season, depending on the size of the pool. Uh, so, uh, looking at the nine that were in the original budget, um, it would have been about a million dollars to open them and you kind of work that way backwards. And you get average. Um, and again, some, some are different than others. Um, but the highest pool for the season is, is, um, it's either Dorsey or Swanson. I can remember, they're, they're close. They're only a couple thousand dollars different. It's about a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars for the, for the
Oh, a hundred and thirty-seven?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay. All right.
I, I'm sorry, I, I have one more question for Susan.
Alan, did you, Alan?
Yeah. So, so how much, how much are we planning on losing on the Haven for the next twelve months?
I don't know. I'd have to look.
Approximately? Give me, give me an order of magnitude.
No, I do not guess and I will not, I'm not going to guess. I'm sorry. I'll, I'll, I can send that to you tomorrow.
Well, then my comment is if we're, if we're losing more on the Haven than we'd be losing on the pools, I think that's a bad trade-off.
Well, we also have to worry about being in the, of a lease at Haven. If we don't open.
Right, we have to pay the rent.
Part of the loss.
All right. Anything else? All right. I want to thank everyone for showing up tonight. Um, you know, and, um, we have a meeting in two weeks. Uh, and thank you very much and have a great evening and a great weekend. Um, and unless there's any objection, we will adjourn. Thank you.
Wait.
Wait, wait, wait. Shari had something.
Aren't you waiting goodbye?
Yeah. Before, before we went. Um, there, there was a question about what came up at the VOC meeting. Um, could you just preview for the board? Um, what's coming up in terms of projects?
I, I was waiting for the, the agenda's supposed to be published shortly. Um, you know, out so the board can see what they all are. Um, wow. I know. I think we, we've got a discussion on, um, like Columbia Core Values for June, June meeting. Um, July is, um, discussion on annual charge. Um, parameters, things like that. Um, possible state legislation, um, items if we have any. Um, we'll probably fit, um, uh, and then we have the, um, a special work session in July, the third, Thursday for addressing our committees. Um, so they'll, they'll report back. Um, and we have a special session in August. Um, which is basically, uh, the budget, financial and also the continuation on our core values.
And, and we're voting on these scooters next meeting, Andy.
Yes, we're going to vote in on these scooters next meeting.
All right, so I, I just want to, to emphasize, um, as people are liaison and they're going to be talking to their advisory committees, that what we wanted them to do this time around, not just to address what they did last year, but to really think about what they want to see in the future. That will help our discussions about, um, not only working with the consultant, but it will help our discussion about the annual charge and about all of that because that's all coming up in June, July and August.
That's important, right.
Um, I, I will try to, you know, come up with some language. You could ask me to do that. So that when we, um, address that to the committees, we can help shape and focus that discussion.
Right. Right. It's, um, we're, we're going to get the agendas out, out shortly. Um, just like we did in the previous times, they'll, they'll be posted and they'll, a link for the board so you can kind of see all the, the stuff we approved.
And, and Andy, could, could, could you or somebody give, I'm sorry, go ahead. Could, could you, Andy, could you or somebody give us twenty-five words or less on, some context for this Columbia values? I mean, we just went through a exercise on mission, vision, values. We're about to get into one with the, with the, um, uh, the development for the county. It, it, there's a, it hit me like, it feels like Nero fiddling while Rome burns that we're going to talk about values when, when all this, uh, stuff is going on.
Shari, do you want to try that?
I, I think, um, I think the idea is to help me shape the discussion about the budget. Um, and so, you know, people have brought this up several times that we get into the budget discussion about, um, setting numbers, but we haven't really determined what the priorities are. Certainly we're, we're probably going to have different priorities coming up with this twenty-two budget. Um, given the situation that we're in. So in that sense, this is not a global, uh, reexamination of the whole strategic plan. In fact, I think it would be a good idea to have the strategic plan available for that meeting. We're not recreating the wheel. We're just talking about how do our programs and services and operations mesh with that? And how does that affect our putting together this next budget? Is that how?
Thank you. As, as, as the one who's been most banging on, on us for not doing that, that provides wonderful context. Thank you.
Yeah, and, and if I could, if I could add to what Sherry said, I think over the years we've talked about, or many of us anyway, um, is it time to, uh, begin to eliminate some programs? Does, do they really, uh, serve us anymore, especially when we have limited budget? So are there things maybe we, we, we shouldn't be doing? Maybe the county should be doing it. And if the county doesn't want to do it, it doesn't matter. We're finished. We're not going to do it. We cut that part, we leave that part of the budget cut. So it's really looking at, you know, what services and what programs, in my opinion, uh, that we have a responsibility to provide to the residents of Columbia as compared to what maybe other organizations should be doing.
All right, I'll give Janet the last opportunity. Janet?
I just wanted to mention that a couple of times now it has happened that decisions have been made in VOC that are not communicated to the rest of the board. So I would like us to think about how we can remedy that situation and either assign a board member the responsibility of communicating back to the board or something along those lines so that any especially important decisions like what time the meeting starts or things like that, budget things, that we are all in the know, uh, right after it happens.
Happy to hear suggestions. Thanks, Janet.
I will come up with a new process for us.
And yes, I'm glad you said board member and not.
Yeah, I don't expect you to do it, Andy. I'm thinking that the rotating members of the board could probably, someone can volunteer to take on that responsibility.
I think that's a great idea. All right. Good. All right. Hearing no objection, we're adjourned. Thank you very much. Take care.
Okay, good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.